I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, June 3rd, 2014 at 6:30. Roll call?
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Terpenny.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seber is absent and excused.
I don't see Pastor Snare. We'll ask our attorney if he would give us a prayer and everyone please stand, remain standing for the pledge of allegiance following.
We gather here tonight in the interest of civility and the progress of this city. We pray that all remember our purpose here and keep the city's interests at heart. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We will now go to public comments on an item that will not be discussed this evening. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Mike Cuscutis, 623 East Tarpon Avenue. I just want to take a moment to recognize Tarpon Springs High School. I know, Mr. Mayor, you were there last night. It was, I want to congratulate the graduates, but also to recognize Tarpon Springs High School because, especially for those who are watching on TV, the graduating rate at Tarpon Springs High is actually one of the highest, if not the highest, in Pinellas County. I think it's somewhere around 95 percent. I think Mr. Mayor would remember that comment. So I think special recognition to Tarpon High and the teachers for a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
That made me take longer than the presentation. Two things took very quickly. Sunday, I believe it was Sunday, in the Tampa Bay Times, there was a very comprehensive article about the ice caps and the melting of the ice caps. I would hope that you have read that, and if you haven't, dig it out and please do so, and that you would keep that in your mind and every consideration that you make on this commission. It has budget implications, at least if you're going to be proactive, and I would hope that you would do so. So in any number of ways, small or large, that you might function this city in a way which will contribute to less of that and a better world for all of us, I think we'd be all well set. Now, why I'm really here. I'm going to present to you, when I'll call for a better term, a white paper. I'll say right up front that no one has seen it nor heard it, and I did that purposely. My wife is sitting here, and she will attest, I think, the fact that I didn't even bounce it off of her this time. I did that because I wanted, I didn't want it to be grandstanding, and I did not want it, I wanted it to be taken very seriously and hope that the contents of the paper would result in some positive changes. So when I'm done, I will present it to the five commissioners, the city manager and the city attorney, as well as the city clerk. The paper basically raises some questions. It perhaps might be seen as critical by some. I don't intend it that way, but it was, it is some observations that I've made, and then it makes some suggestions to you about what you might do moving forward. Let me read you just the opening and closing paragraphs, and then we'll go from there. "I offer this with only one motive, to see the Tarpon Springs City Commission's quasi-legal hearings be more fairly conducted, so that they might be truly impartial and accepted by the community. In a democracy, government must listen to those it represents and act in their behalf. When that doesn't happen, all is lost." Now you might ask, and I cover that in the paper, so I won't go into any great detail, what do you think, Gerald, gives you a right to say anything about this? All I can say is to you, for about 18 years, I had massive experience at quasi-legal, quasi-judicial hearings, excuse me. So then I'll read you the last paragraph, and then I'll present you the papers, and I will hope that then that would lead to some discussions. I certainly don't need to take more of my time doing this, but I will, because I think it's important. "Tarpon Springs is my home. It is my community. I want Tarpon Springs to have a reputation for open, fair, and responsive government. Actually, there should never be any other kind of government. As it relates to quasi-judicial hearings, we aren't there yet." So with that, I'll present to you the papers, and hopefully we can have some discussions.
Then another public comments. We'll now go to proclamations. Item number one is Hurricane Awareness Month, and this proclamation reads, "City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, whereas in August and September of 2004 Hurricanes Charlie, Francis, Jean, and Ivan made landfall in the state of Florida causing major damage to the state; and whereas in 2005 Hurricane Katrina struck Louisiana and Mississippi and caused catastrophic damage and the loss of thousands of lives; whereas forecasters predict increased tropical storm activity in 2014 as we remain in a period of increased major hurricane activity; and whereas the Tampa Bay region faces tremendous challenges of evacuation, response, and recovery in the coastal metropolitan region; and whereas Tarpon Springs supports the state of Florida's Florida prepares program for preparedness and mitigation of all hazards; and whereas the key to the success of any hurricane evacuation plan is the informed citizen; and whereas the 2014 hurricane guide was produced and distributed region-wide in May. Now therefore, I, David Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2014 as Hurricane Awareness Month." And we'll ask Chief Butcher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. Real quick, I'm just going to let you know that I will be back the first meeting in July to do a presentation to you all about what we're doing locally for emergency management and hurricane preparedness, and should something happen between now and then, we are ready.
Thank you. Any public comments on this item? Then we'll now go to presentation, item number two, Chamber of Commerce Beautification Awards. Ms. Thomas, President of the Chamber.
Sue Thomas, Tarpon Springs, Chamber of Commerce President, 111 East Tarpon Avenue. We have two tonight. Both of these got held for various reasons, so we're very happy to present two, to two really deserving companies. One of them just remodeled. One of them took a piece of dirt, and I guess you remodeled it, didn't you? Come on up. If you haven't been by Santos Isles on Safford and Martin Luther King, you need to go by and see what can happen to a piece of dirt when you have a company that has a wonderful plan. Santos Isles is absolutely beautiful. Brian Murphy is here. He is the Director of Landscaping, and I'll tell you what, you can come into my house anytime. Did a wonderful job, and I'd like him to tell you a little bit about, can you hold on to that? Smile, Reggie. Give you a little bit of idea of what their facility is about. It is truly beautiful.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I'd like to tell the City of Tarpon Springs thank you on behalf of the Richmond Group, President Kristin Miller. It's a pleasure to invest in this community and just share this amenity, so to speak, where we offer, you know, residential housing for seniors, 55 and up, limited availability, rooms are going really fast, and we're really proud of our product. We offer a grand clubhouse for our residents, and a fitness center, laundry center, resort-style pool, and then the grounds speak for themselves. They really sparkle, and hopefully they really make a positive impact in this community for the residents and for those that visit for years to come. So we want to thank you.
Brian, thank you.
Yes.
You did a great job. And our second one took a building that has just been kind of sitting on the corner of Pinellas Avenue and Tarpon Avenue, and I have to say, it's a little scary in there, and Paul did say that whoever has the lowest in sales has to sit in front of the window, because that curve is a rough one. But Paul Donovan from Donovan Insurance Solutions did a wonderful, wonderful job remodeling that building. It's now all green, is there's a reason for that? Little Irish in there, little tiny bit, your award. Now, I don't know where you're going to find the dirt to put that in, but maybe a window or something. But I'd like to introduce Paul Donovan, who's done a beautiful job in fixing up a really not-so-pretty building.
Thank you. First, let me just say Santos Building was, that just shines. It makes me smile every time I drive by that. It really came out beautiful. Congratulations, and thank you to the City Council and the Chamber. We just, we have pride in our city, just like we want to make everything look beautiful and be beautiful, and we want to do a good job in what we're doing, and my dad always said, it's just as important how you do something as what you do. And so we're just happy to be located there, where there's no awnings to be hit, but we have been hit in our building this year alone. So we're so grateful and thankful, and truly appreciate the opportunity to continue to do business in Tarpon Springs and to serve the community.
It's a pleasure to have you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to mention, for those of you who don't know, this will be my last beautification presentation, because I think you know I'm retiring in 23 days. So Reggie will be taking over whether she wants to or not, and I want to thank everybody who has fixed up their buildings so beautifully, so that we could do these awards, and I hope they'll go on for years and years. Thank you.
Thank you. We definitely just want to let both of these businesses know we appreciate their efforts in terms of, first, being in Tarpon, and second, to do some little things that make the builders look better and truly represent what we have to offer here in Tarpon Springs. So I say thank you. Is there any public comments on these items? Seeing none, we will now go to consent agenda, satisfaction release of leads, attorney fees, Thompson, Sizmore, Gonzalez, and hearing LLP invoice number 75462, and B is invoice 75709. Five is special events, Fourth of July Patriotic Picnic in the Park Recreation Division on July 4th. Six is authorized city manager to execute crime scene services agreement with the Pinellas County Sheriff. Seven is increased bid number 120058-B-CM, tree trimming and tree removal services. Eight is award file number 140073-N-DM, purchase of citywide internet and related services. Nine is award bid number 140066-B-CM, pipeline inspection and condition assessments. Ten is authorized increase to file 140038-C-DM, Florida Sheriff's Association Contract number 13-11-0904 for the purchase of trade winds generator and transfer station. Is there any item anyone would like to pull? Seeing none, Chair will entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Any other public comments on any of these items? Roll call?
Commissioner Banther.
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Next is special consent, item number 11, award bid number 140054-B-JJ, temporary fire station 71.
I'll go have Chief Butcher come up while he's coming up. Obviously, we talked about this, it seems like a long time ago, but we were talking about the ability to have our station on north side of the river, about the one area of response times, and of course, one of the things that was holding us up was the constant struggle over the EMS agreement with the county and us getting the money. Seemingly, all those things at this time being resolved, we're able to, we've been working on moving forward, and the chief will let you know where we are to get that temporary station up and going, as we talked about probably during the last budget session, to try to get it up. Sooner or later, we kind of moved the timeline up a year, and hopefully to get this building up until we can build the permanent facility and knock down that, one of the few places in the county where that response time does not meet the standards.
And Chief Cochin has been helping out as well with the financial aspects with Pinellas County. The station itself, as the city manager says, will create a, or close the big gap in response time for the north side of the river. As you know, that area's been poorly represented for fire rescue, for, still as of today, for us to get to the north side. If one of the bridges is blocked, we're in trouble. Now, the fire station itself that we're putting together for this, we did put scope of work together. This will be on the city's RO property, so it's on the same property. What we, what we plan on doing is, through the help of the procurement, I think is what you call yourself, through Jay Jackus and his group, the bid went out, it came back in, and this is the low bid. It is a local company, and I will be happy to answer any questions if you have specifically about the facility itself, the temporary facility, the permanent facility in the future, the response. As far as the bid part of it, I think Mr. Jackus would be best to answer any of those questions.
I really don't have any questions, Chief, but I just want to thank you and everyone involved for continuing to move this project forward. It's something that we've looked forward to for a while. Hopefully, it'll be a catalyst for some things to happen on the other side and give us greater capacity to handle any situations as far as emergencies. And then I'm definitely always happy when we have a local company that can take advantage of some of the services that we have in terms of being known. So with that, any Vice Mayor Lawson?
Thank you. A couple of questions. I'm really interested, I guess, in the timeline. It says in the back that the construction is anticipated to be substantially complete by September 1st, 2014. I'm wondering if that's when we would start utilizing it, or at what point we hope to start utilizing it, and in addition to that, I'm wondering how long we plan on utilizing the temporary fire station as opposed to a permanent one.
Okay. The turn-on date is planned for October 1st of this year. The reason that we have the completion date for the, for the project itself is to give us the 30 days to get the 911 alerting system in the radios, computers, and whatnot, to finish up, get the furniture, get everything ready to go. So we will turn on at 7:00 a.m. October 1. As far as how long we're going to be in the facility, it does vary. We can stay there for a couple of years or whatever we need. It's based on the RO plant's completion. All of the trailers that the RO plant's using for their office is right now sitting on the property that will be the fire station. Once we get this up and running, we can start the process of, you know, looking around, getting construction drawings and planning for the permanent facility. But it could be a couple of years prior to opening that. But having said that, it won't change the fact that we will be responding from that property starting October 1.
Thank you.
No other questions? We'll go to public comments.
Good evening. Peter Lacks, 504 Ashland Avenue. It is nice to finally see the fruition of this, and I hope we, I'm not sure what the status is of the connector road on LR Industrial, but hopefully that can get that open so they have access off of the north side and speed up times also. But my thing I was thinking about was, if these are like manufactured buildings, I don't know if they're steel or they're put together like prefab, that at the time when they do go to, you know, to their permanent facilities, that the city does try to find some way to recoup the value of those buildings. So depending on what you're putting on there, it may cost a little bit more for something that is easier to take apart later versus something that you just nail and screw in, and it's cheaper to put in where you can't maybe recoup as much out later. So just a thought. Thank you.
Chief?
Yes.
As far as the road goes, the punch-through road will be, is planned to be completed by the time we get in there. At least at some phase, it'll be a base that we can utilize for driving on. As far as the repurposing of these structures, that is part of our plan. When we're finished and we move into our permanent structure, these buildings are, will be able to be either sold or reused somewhere else in the city. That is part of our plan.
Thank you.
Where'd he go? He wasn't even listening.
He'll see it on the tape. But thank you for that. Next, we'll go to item number, well, actually, we need a motion.
We have approval.
Second. Roll call?
Commissioner Banther.
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Next, we go to ordinance resolution, item number 12, Ordinance 2014-11, Clearwater Gas Franchise Agreement, our first reading.
First reading, Ordinance 2014-11, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, a municipal corporation granting to the City of Clearwater, Florida its legal representative, successor and assigns a gas franchise, and imposing certain conditions relating thereto, providing for repeal of all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date. The second reading to be held on June 17, 2014, and will be published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on June 6, 2014. This has been the first reading of Ordinance 2014-11 by title only.
Are you prepared to hand, or?
I defer to you.
Okay. Basically, the city attorney, in dealing with this as it came up, was looking at some recent ordinances of other cities, and I was at the actual last one where they talked about this, so I'm not as familiar as he is with this. But the difference in this clause is the normal franchise agreements, obviously, they want a long period of time, 30 years. This one has a nuance, whereas 15 years, with some nuances on extensions that Jay was able to incorporate in. Again, looking at some of the new agreements, I believe it was Largo, and I can't remember the other city that just did one.
Oldsmar, I believe it was.
Which one?
Oldsmar, I believe.
So there's a couple models out there, the negotiated agreement. I know he tried to reach most of you, not being there to, of course, he was involved from beginning on it. Again, this is a first reading. Obviously, we have a situation now where the second reading would be on the 16th, which we may only have three commissioners at. Depending on what we want to do on the first reading statute, you know, if you have enough information or need more, we could always pass on the first and maybe talk about waiting until we have a full commission on the first to do the second reading and go into that. There's several options, or we can just, we can just move it, depending if you've got enough information now to do this, or you want to move. Again, there has to be two readings, but you realize now to the 16th, we may only have three commissioners on board on here. So if we do get it past the first one, we might want to announce a different date for that second reading, so all five would be able to weigh in on the final agreement.
If I may weigh in substantively, Mark, for those of you who didn't have an opportunity to speak to Jay, the ordinance is set up such that this is an agreement with sunset and renewal options. Ordinarily, these agreements historically have been 30-year agreements. This one is structured so that the city can reevaluate at different time periods along the way to determine whether that technology still makes sense and provide for options that both allow Clearwater Gas, if it's built, the infrastructure to recoup its costs, while still allowing the city to reevaluate those methods.
Thank you. I did have a chance to talk with Jay, and it seemed like a pretty good compromise in relationship to normally doing a 30-year versus the five, which gives other commissioners an opportunity to revisit whether they want to continue this. Also, some provisions in there that Clearwater Gas would like to have as far as what they're doing is expanding dollars for, to expand the service. So to me, it looks like a good compromise in terms of flexibility for the city, but also give Clearwater Gas the opportunity to be able to recoup some of the dollars that they would expend in terms of expanding the services. But hopefully, if everybody didn't have a chance to talk to Jay, we'll be able to do that before the second reading, and then if there are some issues, we can look at, maybe try to defer it for additional comments. So, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I also agree that it sounds like there are some changes in here that are probably positive as compared to previous agreements. I understand that the agreements previously tended to be 30 years, and I think it's very positive that there's an opportunity to end this if need be after 15 years. However, I would like some additional information that we don't have here. One thing that I would like to see is a very specific list of changes from the previous contract to this one, because we only had the new contract in our backups. We weren't able to see specifically what the changes were. It's my understanding that the only change is related to the terms of the agreement, but I'd like to see the previous agreement to review those changes. And furthermore, I'd like to get more specific information on the direction that other municipalities have gone in regards to this issue. It sounds like one option might be to simply defer at this point, which wouldn't slow anything down anyway, because we wouldn't want to do the second reading with only three commissioners, is what I think I was hearing from the city manager. So I guess one option could be to defer now. Theoretically, I don't know if we could do the first reading with three commissioners, and then therefore we would have, hopefully, a full board by the time we do the second reading. Would that be an option?
Any of those are an option, either now and change in the second meeting, or vice versa?
Well, if I could, my motion would be to move to defer this item at this point, and hopefully get some additional information before the first reading.
I'll second.
Which date?
I mean, I'm guessing the information I'm requesting isn't difficult to come by, so the next meeting would be fine with me. I don't know.
And I don't know whether they can just basically underline the changes that Vice Mayor talked about, so you can basically.
We should be able to provide a red line document.
Yeah.
I believe we have a copy of that somewhere. To be clear, as far as provisions that have changed, the portion or apportionment to the city of that 6 percent figure that you see in the contract is the same as it previously was.
And I know he had the other agreements, so it'd be really easy to get those other, the recent agreements we talked about, and get those to you to look at what the other cities have done recently, since there's, I think, at least two, maybe a third one in process that have done it recently. So you can see those documents, too. We can all get that to you, you know, rather fast.
That'd be very good.
Okay. Any other public comments on this item?
Marty Peters, 1702 Heritage Oaks Court, and I'm also Chair of the Budget Advisory Committee. I would like to suggest that you send this, put this on the agenda for the next Budget Advisory Committee meeting. There's some things I think it would be worth discussing and hammering out in that small group, and try and get some answers for the commission. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be at that meeting, so let me tell you some of the things I think would be useful to have and have the Budget Advisory Committee members discuss and talk about. One is, the price of natural gas has decreased significantly in the last several years because of fracking. And how does this impact our agreement? Does it impact it in any Does it impact it in any way? Is it possible basically to work something out in the agreement that would reduce the cost of natural gas for people? I'm not sure that it can. I'm not sure that this isn't a good deal to begin with and doesn't, but I think it would be useful to look at. It also might be helpful, as was mentioned, to compare it with some of the other cities and what they're doing. I don't know if there's any other possibility of putting this out to an outside bid and having some other organization bid on it. Sometimes when you have multiple bids, the price gets lower. And it seems like a lot of this is being decided, we're kind of deferring the decision-making process on this to the Clearwater City Council. And it might be worth taking a look at the implications of that a little bit, too. How does that affect our control here in Tarpon Springs? And I know that there was, in the last election campaign, somebody, Mr. Harbosky, spoke about taking a look at Duke Energy and their contract and taking a look and seeing if that was a valuable thing for us to take a look at. Well, it seems to me that that is something along those same lines. It's worth taking a look at. I'm not sure that the solutions are going to be any different than what you have right before you. At least my initial reaction on the Duke Energy thing is I'm not sure that the statistics are there that have been proposed that make it advantageous to go somewhere else, i.e. taking it over ourselves. And I'm not sure that it would be advantageous for us to take over natural gas ourselves. I'm not sure we have the expertise for it. But it would be a good thing to take a look at these things when we're signing ourselves into these long-term, or maybe not so long-term, contracts now with the modifications. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other comments? Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Misslanus items, number 13, request to negotiate development agreement Lexington Reserve. Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. This is a request to negotiate a development agreement for Lexington Reserve. This is a proposed single-family subdivision. The application is, we're requesting the board's permission to authorize city staff to enter into a development agreement negotiations for proposed 58-lot, single-family subdivision to be located on 23.52 acres at the northwest corner of Keystone Road and George Street. The property is currently in unincorporated Pinellas County, and this is the eastern limits of our annexation planning area. Specific details obviously will be worked out through the normal review and negotiation, but the development agreement will address the annexation, future land use map amendment, rezoning to a planned development, as well as a few additional things connecting, using Pinellas County utilities, coordination with Eastlake Fire District, since it's in their fire district area, the layout of the subdivision itself, typical lot details, street layouts and mitigations for impacts to on-site wetlands. So those are a few things that have already been identified. Obviously, that's not an exhaustive list, and as we go through the process, more things may be added to that as part of the development agreement. So as I said, this is just the initial step to enter into the, authorize the city manager to enter into negotiations, if that is the board's pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Simpson? Commissioner Terpenny?
Thank you. It's a question for the city manager, and really it's just a point of clarification. This is just for you to begin negotiating with the developer, but there'll certainly be an opportunity for myself or any other commissioner to address specific concerns with you independently prior to this coming back?
Yes. According to the way we've developed, I can't even talk with them until this commission approves it. So that would be giving me, we'll be at the starting point of talking, and there'd be plenty of time for input and dealing with commissioners as we go through the process before, you know, it comes back to us in development agreement.
Thank you.
Do you want to entertain a motion? I will after I get a motion, if I might. Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Public comments? Thank you.
I started looking at this tonight, and Anita Protas, 901 Bay Shore Drive, Tarpon Springs. It says BGV Limited LLP has entered into a contract to purchase and develop this property subject, subject to obtaining annexation, zoning and site development approvals needed for construction and to make this development work. Well, that's great. They want to come into the city of Tarpon Springs, and we welcome them into Tarpon Springs. But coordination of the city's review process for concurrent review and public hearings to consider approval of property annexation, future land use map amendment for residential rural to residential suburban rezoning for these 58 lots. But yet, they don't want to connect to our utilities, so we're going to lose that money. Number one. That money should be, come to the city utilities if they want to come and have a Tarpon Springs address. We don't give up money. Coordination of an agreement between the city of Tarpon Springs and the Eastlake Fire District, they need to pay the impact fees and use our fire district here in Tarpon Springs, our fire department. We're giving away the baby here. The subdivision will compromise 56 new lots. That's great, with their setback and easements. But then, then, the internal streets will be private and gated with a 40-foot right-of-way instead of 60, which we've always required. What are we doing here? Giving away our rights with a development proposal and money that should be coming to the city of Tarpon Springs. Mitigation for impacts to on-site wetland areas through developer-funded wetland enhancements at the city's dog park on East Live Oak Street? They want to mitigate with our dog park, but yet they don't want to give us any money? This is wrong. Something's sick here. And I hope our city manager has enough intellect to realize this, because this is going to set a precedent amongst some of these developments here. And I'm going to tell you right now, once this gets out on the street, there's going to be hell to pay for this one, because you're giving away money, you're giving away rights, you're making a smaller street, you're accommodating. But everybody else has had the toe of the road to get what they want. You've got another one coming up pretty soon, and that one's going to raise a lot of cane, too. Don't give away your rights and the money of the citizens and what's due to the community. You need to get everything you can for this community. If they want to use Tarpon Springs, well, you pay your impact fees to us. Commissioner Terpenny, thank you for getting the fireworks for us. Fourth of July is four weeks from tomorrow, and Master Terpenny will be month old, just in time. Congratulations. You got to look at this, commissioners. We put the trust in you to get the best for Tarpon Springs. Don't give our money and our rights away.
If I may, Mayor, just to point out, she probably brought the fireworks, because she's going to put me on one of the rockets or something, I don't know. But Ms. Protas, just remember what it says on the following items are expected to be addressed within the development agreement. We haven't negotiated. Those are the things they want to address, but we haven't negotiated. That's why they're giving me authority to go in and negotiate all those items. Those are not set in stone. Those are items that's going to be talked about in the negotiation stuff, so. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Pete Pensom, a certified planner with Avid Group. I know you've been in front of you on numerous projects in the past, I know a lot of you. There's obviously some misunderstanding, with all due respect, on this. You know, it is, the whole point of this is to come in front of you to get the opportunity to talk about developing in the city. My client, who's a local business in Palm Harbor, they are a developer, have done numerous projects throughout Pinellas County and elsewhere in Tampa Bay. They have a contract to purchase the property from four parcels. Two of those residents are going to stay on that property. There are two of the homes will be remaining. They are two of those 58 lots that are proposed. The remainder of the property will be developed with the 56 single-family homes, 62 by 120, so they're not small lots. The density on the site would be roughly two and a half units an acre, actually a little less than that, about 2.3, as we've proposed. Just to address the, let me go through her comments first, just so we can understand them and walk through that. Or actually, I'm going to go on the bullet list from what we talked about in our request. The reason for coordinating the city review processes is that the, for a couple of reasons. One is that the buyer of the property and their lender need to have permit approvals before they're able to finance and close on the property, so therefore they need to have assurance that they can get through that process. As you know, when you annex, there's next to impossible to de-annex a property. So we need to be able to coordinate that effort, make sure we can go through the process. It also provides a level of assurance to the city that you know what product you're going to get, what the subdivision is going to be like, the quality of it, the review process. You'll have control of that. The annexation, the land use, the zoning, preliminary site plan or preliminary plat will all be reviewed concurrently through the technical review committee, through the planning board, through the city council, so that you all have input on it before we get to the final stages on that. So it allows for greater input right up front from the city, both from the staff and the commission, board and commission. The next point was connection to Pinellas County utilities. We would love to connect the city utilities, but we've met with city staff. It's not feasible. The lines are too far away to provide service. Pinellas County has utilities adjacent to the site, so it's the correct way to do it, because the utilities are there currently. If we had the opportunity to connect the city utilities, we would do that. The next one is coordination agreement with Tarpon, with, I'm sorry, with Eastlake Fire District. We would gladly be on the city, in the city's fire district. We have no problems with that. I understand that you have a history with the fire district and some other properties that were annexed, and that alternative agreements had to be worked out. What we're doing is we're saying that we are assuming that that's going to be a part of the process going through this. It's not an issue of being not serviced by Tarpon Springs Fire District, that, as you know, it's in the city, would become part of the districts. But Pinellas County is also a closest to respond county, so depending on which fire station happens to have trucks in the area, that's who would respond in an incident in the future. I talked about the 56 lots already, the typical lot details, all that. We have a fairly detailed concept plan that we provided to you to show you what it is we're looking at. The next step, if you authorize this, would be to submit a plan to the technical review committee so they can look at it and provide for the detailed planning and engineering utilities feedback for us that we can then go forward. And ultimately, it'll come back in front of you, continuing, continue to go through those other technical review processes and ultimately be approved by you at the end of the day. As far as the private streets go, we are proposing 40-foot right-of-way. It is 11-foot lanes for traffic with two-foot curb and gutter on each side, plus utility corridors and sidewalks on both sides of the streets. So it's an alternative to what the city standard is, but it provides a comparable alternative. And being private and gated, that provides for a different appearance and sense of security in the development. And it also means that it's not an ongoing expense for the city, because the homeowner association would have to maintain those streets rather than the city's general fund and other tax revenues. As far as the mitigation goes, there's less than half of an acre.
One of the things is the bell just went off, and I definitely appreciate all that you're going through, but if we get to a process of approving this, we believe that our city manager and staff is well able to deal with this. You know, I think the mayor just wanted to try to get you moving a little bit, you know? But we understand the process, I think that she does, too. This is just preliminary. You all have a letter. None of this has been agreed to, so I appreciate you going through all these steps, but for me, we'll be dealing with that when we try to get, hem out a development agreement. When we do that, then it'll be coming back and going through the normal process, you know, so that we can definitely look at, seeing if this is going to work for both of us. But we appreciate you taking the time and opportunity to come up and maybe clarify some of the statements that was made, though.
Okay. We look forward to working with you.
All right.
I know it's not a planning and zoning meeting, or a site plan, or a zoning or land use meeting, but, boy, I've got a lot of questions right off the bat. Former Mayor Protas made out a good thing about the impact fees and hooking up to utilities. I don't care how far it is. They need to hook up to Tarpon. And I'll tell you one reason why, because you're going to have Mr. Burton come here one day telling you you're going to have to raise your water and sewer rates, because you're not generating enough revenue between the empty lots and the vacant houses. You're adding, quote, "potentially 56 units," or maybe less if you count what's already there, "into the water and sewer stream." Necessary. We've always made developers hook up to where it is, so they can figure some way out. These are good engineers. Secondly, when I look at this initial concept, I am scared. I don't see any open space. And this is Keystone Road. This is reminding me of what happened to Palm Harbor, going down Alderman Road and Klosterman Road, even some altar in 19. It says here, "Future land use currently residential rural, half a dwelling unit an acre, proposed residential suburban, two and a half developed units an acre, five times the density." Now, we know they're jumping out the woodwork out on Keystone Road, because they figure they got this new road, they can dump all these projects in, but that, you have legislative capacity to deny. And by denying that, you can force through what type of zoning you want. The zoning will be quasi-judicial, so it's very important you pick the proper land use, because they want to go in zoning from agricultural estate residential to rural plan development, which would give you, you know, I guess that 2.47 dwelling units. Be careful. I haven't been out there recently enough to see exactly where this property abuts to, how treated it is, but as I remember, on Keystone, there are a lot of pockets of areas that are heavily wooded, and we keep giving away that valuable canopy and airspace. Thank you.
There are no other public comments? Do we have a motion?
We do.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Next we'll go to item number 42, the appointment of Commissioner DeServal, Florida Hospital, North Pinellas Working Group for Capital Improvements. Mr. Cuskudis?
Thank you. Mike Cuskudis, 623 East Tarpon Avenue. I know we're going to have a PowerPoint presentation. Bruce Bergam is here from Florida Hospital, the CEO. First, I want to acknowledge the city manager for having the insight to recognize the need for an expansion of the ER. Access to emergency care is critical to this community. It's the first place you go in an emergency, so that's why, one of the reasons we're here tonight. Before Adventist Health took over the hospital, I also was on the board at that time and sat on the hospital foundation. We looked at, probably about, again, eight years ago, possible ER expansion. We actually had statistics consultants come in, and over eight years ago, it was deemed that the emergency room was too small to meet the needs of the community. Over the past eight years, the demand has increased. Thanks to the good work at Florida Hospital, we're actually seeing increases in the statistics of the. of the, of the, of the access to the emergency room greater than we actually even thought that there, that we budgeted for. So the emergency room is very, very busy, and it's too small. So, you know, one of the things that was discussed was to create a committee to develop and recommend a strategic plan to bring back in front of this commission, to look at both the physical plant, to see where a new emergency room would fit, and to see how to fund the expansion process. The cost of, you know, what we also need to look at is this probably would require some type of referendum from this community, and need the support of this community. It would need the support of this commission. It would need the support of this hospital, the hospital foundation, and would also need the support of Adventist Health Systems. And because this is so critical, it's important that, that the city also has a seat at the table in this strategic plan. So one of the things that, that we are requesting and, is to have a member of the commission sit at the table to help develop a strategic plan. And at this point, I'd like to turn this over to Bruce Bergam, CEO. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Bruce Bergam, 1395 South Pinellas Drive, Tarpon Springs. Commissioners, chief, mayor, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak. I believe we have a PowerPoint presentation. There we go. Very good. So this is your hospital here. As you guys will remember, you know, the Florida Hospital, Avis Health System, we lease this hospital from the city. I believe we've got 28 more years on this current lease, so just wanted to remind you So just recently, in the last couple of weeks, this hospital, your hospital, was given a grade by Leapfrog, which is a business coalition group, that graded, gave us a grade of A. If we all think back to our school grades, you know, A is where we want to be, or we want our kids to be, and F's not at the other end of the spectrum there. So we were the only hospital in Pinellas County that was a grade A. There was only another hospital that's north of us, a little ways, that was an A, but everybody else around the community is a B, C, and/or D on that list. So you should be very proud of the work going on at your hospital here. So just wanted to reflect back on the emergency room. You will remember that we have a 13-bed facility. Those of you who've had the, either the fortune or the unfortunate need to have to use the emergency room for care, you'll realize that we're very tight with space. We are a chest pain center. We have primary stroke center. These are all achievements we've worked on the last three years. You know, we have a focus internally on no wait. About 96% of our patients are seen within five minutes by a provider. Our patient satisfaction, which the government measures, which the government measures, you know, we're, we're certainly in the top quartile. In fact, this past week, we were recognized by Avis Health System as the most, as the highest performing emergency room from a patient satisfaction standpoint. So again, we're focused very hard on those things that, you know, make the hospitals relevant. Strong year-over-year volume. We're going to show you some numbers, but we're experiencing 10% growth over last year, which was an improvement or increase over the prior year. So we continue to see growth in our, in the emergency room. All board-certified emergency room physicians, full complement of specialty services, and, you know, the emergency room is, for most hospitals and this hospital, the front door to patient care for most patients. So here's our growth. You could see what we've seen over the last five years, from 2010, 7.7%, 4% in 2013, and then this year, we're expecting to be over 10% for 2014. You know, part of the challenges we have there is just the parking on that ramp. We've only got nine parking spots, dedicated spots. In fact, the EMS has asked us to take away additional spots so that they can more safely back into the facility. You know, we've talked about the fact it's not a traffic light there. As you enter onto South Pinellas Drive, I get a number of letters every, every year from patients saying that it's frustrating for them trying to get out there, specifically during season. So that's something we'd like to address. You know, the facility was, was built in 1978, and, you know, frankly, it's, it was a capacity issue, and there's certainly a privacy issue. If you happen to be in one of the cubicles that is separated by curtains, you will be able to hear exactly what's going on next door to you there. So certainly not the ideal situation. So just some pictures here of your ER. You can see the spaces there. Let me turn this on. You can see this spot here, they would like us to take this spot away. That would reduce the number of parking spots going on here, so clearly a challenge. This is our lobby, you know, back in the, in the patient care areas. These are the curtains that separate the treatment areas. You know, again, some more oversea, you know, this, we do, unfortunately, we're required to put patients in these chairs when we're at capacity here that are being treated, the back area, limited storage there. So again, we, we want to, you know, as the hospital continues to be more successful and that the patients or members of the community feel that they want to trust their care to the hospital, you know, the growth of the hospital or the use of the hospital is increasing. So as Michael said, back in 2008, there was some, you know, people looked at this situation, and they identified that there was a need. I think at that time, they looked at 20,000 square feet. The project, you know, estimates were anywhere from $20 to $35 million. So we just need to be able to, you know, take care of our patients on a, in the most expeditious way. So this is one concept that was looked at back then. You could see the ER was located here. This is the front door. This is Pinellas Drive, South Pinellas. So that was one concept there. Another option was to place the emergency room right here. So you can see that on this, on this representation. And, you know, these are many hospitals that have just been built. You can see some of the technology and what their rooms look like. This probably would be about two or three rooms that we have there in the, in the emergency room. You know, rooms dedicated to kids. I'll go through this quickly. Some hospitals even have the CT right there. CT is constantly being used for patients that come in through the emergency room. On ours, you have to go probably a good 200, 300 feet to get to our, to our CT areas. So this is a sister hospital to ours. You can see what their nurses' stations look like. I tell you, our doctors and our nurses are stacked on top of each other to, you know, in the setting that we have there. So something that we would address with an expansion. So, you know, essentially, it's something that we need to look at, and I think I just want to thank Michael for his support and, and shared vision that we need to begin to look at the future of this hospital. Clearly, the existing emergency room is not conducive for the future there. So I would welcome one of the commissioners to join us in, in this study. Mark, I thank you for your support to allow us to move forward, at least in a study group, and we have strong support from our foundation. I know that Florida Hospital, Avis Health System, is prepared to step up to the plate. May I remind you, we've invested over $40 million into the facility thus far, and so we are committed to being, you know, here through the duration of the lease, and hopefully you'll allow us to renew the lease there, so. But again, we've got a great, we've got some great things happening at the hospital.
Unless this commission has any questions, like I said, you know, our, our goal is not, you know, and I want to back up a little bit. Back in '08, when we looked at, at the pricing of, of what it would be, there were cheaper ways to do it, but this community deserves the best, and we want to hit a home run. And to hit a home run, it's going to take a good strategic plan. It's going to take the cooperation of this commission. It will take the cooperation of the citizens of this community. It'll take the cooperation of the foundation, and it'll take the cooperation of Adventist Health Systems. If we have like four legs of a table, if we have a four-legged table, we'll have a strong table. And I really honestly believe that we need to plan way in the future and hit a home run with this, and we don't get too many opportunities to do this. So, you know, I'd like to thank this commission for, for listening to us. I, I know, again, it's important that the, that the city have a seat at the table when we, when we have this discussion. So again, if there's any questions, prepare to answer them.
I don't have any question. I just say that I think all of us appreciate the efforts that's ongoing at the hospital, the direction that the hospital has been moving in in the, the last few years. So I think all of us recognize the need for improvement for is the emergency room is concerned. It's my thought that the community has always stepped up to the plate when there was a valid need, and they will step up to the plate as far as making sure that this process, one that goes well, and that we're able to see it to its completion. I know one of the things that you had asked was that Commissioner Tarpani had expressed a desire to, to be that individual, and if, you know, there's no objections looking at, by consensus, you know, that can happen in terms of moving this project forward. And I feel reasonably sure that whatever we need to do collectively as a body, you know, we'll get that done in terms of continuing what we think is, has been a great partnership so far. We'd like to see it continue into the future. 28 years from now, we know that, Mr. Bergam, you'll still be there?
I will. You'll be pushing me down a wheelchair.
You know, it's just my hope to not have to utilize your services so much 28 years from now, but we definitely appreciate that. I don't know if there's any questions that you might have, or I know Commissioner Tarpani probably has something you'd like to say.
I just want to thank you all for your foresight in terms of coming, coming forward with this and really trying to form a partnership with the city. I know that's something that we had talked about, and I've been privy to in some of the conversations we had, and I really just want to thank you for your confidence in suggesting that I would be the liaison to the board. And I also want to thank the board for, the board's confidence in, in forming a consensus that, that I could be the liaison, and I look forward to the discussions, look forward to working with the foundation and keeping this board privy to everything that's being discussed, so we can be one of those strong legs of the table. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comments on this item? Saying nothing, we thank you for that presentation, and we'll now move to item number 15, authorize city manager to sign letter of agreement. City manager.
As I told you at the last meeting, I was needing to go a different direction with the Development Services Division and the Development Services Director. I had told you that we, I was in talks with him about voluntary resignation and separation agreement. He's been employee of almost 24 years with, with the city, and I wanted, as we've done in the past with employees, and we recently did work on a fair severance and resignation process, also working with him to make sure we have our coverage as a certified building official and certified floodplain manager until I was able to secure a replacement for the short term before we go and talk about the different directions. Why that's important, because if we don't have that, all permits and everything will shut completely down. So we've had very good talks. We've involved your labor attorney for the city, Aaron Jackson, who's our labor attorney, has worked to get this agreement, along with, as you see, not only a letter agreement, but a release from claims that's very important for a city. We've got the condition in there that the resignation will take July 1st or thereafter at my discretion. When I can see your current agreement, I can tell you right now, I'll be talking to the city attorney tomorrow of a local agency that's willing to go into a local, inter-local agreement with us to do that for us, but realizing the timeframe, it could be four to six weeks, so it may be a mid-July point. That's why I wanted to give that leeway from July 1st to do that, but it's at my discretion, July 1st or any time afterwards to execute that. But I fully think we've got a jurisdiction to step up while we talk about what we're going to do, what we need to look at to cover those two things. We have to have a certified building official and a certified floodplain manager. Mr. DePasqua was in the process of having Anthony in the division take all the necessary testing for it. He completes his last courses in, in September and October and would be available either as a backup, or obviously would be able to apply if a position come up if he wanted to. I'm not so sure he'd want the full, complete one, but he was preparing for a backup in that, so we were going to continue with that and have, have our employee, however we go with, whether we bring a building director or how, how I bring forward to you to change development services, we have to have those two things covered or everything's shut down. So we're going to start in that agreement. This gives us some time to do it. It's fair, it's been looked at, again, by our labor attorney and approved. We sent it to Jay, representing a city attorney, to look at also, to see if there's any concerns from your end they could bring up. But obviously, we've got one of the best labor attorney firms that's in the area with Tom Gonzalez's group, and Aaron Jackson's been working with us a long time. So this is a, this is a fair severance for the employee, for the city, and begins my ability to develop some different direction we're going in there. So I wholeheartedly hope you will support this, and we can move on in our new direction. Any questions that you don't want to have for the manager?
Peter Lax, 514 Ashland Avenue. I understand the need to keep Mr. DePasqua on because of the certified building official stuff and all that till, you know, you find someone, and that would be the effective date of the resignation. But my concern was items three and four, where you're going to continue to pay Mr. DePasqua till the end of the fiscal year. I would think he probably may be on another month or two months, and to that. I don't recall him or any other department managers being on a contract such that they're obligated certain amount of severance pay now. Again, I haven't seen the employee handbook to see what it may describe for those type of employees. And I didn't really fully, totally read the release of claims thing, although I was concerned about paragraph two. It says, "In further consideration for being permitted to resign." If you're not under a contract, I don't see why you need permission to resign. If it's a voluntary resign, you just resign. So I don't know, there's just things I'm curious about, that's all.
Anita Prost, 901 Bayshore Drive. You said he's still going to stay on as an employee till when?
Until July 1st or thereafter, when I get the agreement. He is not running the day-to-day operations of development services. All he is is, under his certified building official and floodplain manager, in essence, he is the authority that gives our main person, Anthony, the authority to do that. Anthony does not have those, and you have to have one of those, one of those people involved. So until we can enter into, there's several options. One's bringing somebody in temporary, but the cost of that is astronomical. The other thing is to go into an inter-local agreement with another government entity and have them do it, which is the way I'm going to pursue. So it will be when we can get that into agreement, we've been told by the entity, that we are going to begin talking with, with our attorney, their attorney. By the time you get the process of approval, it's probably a four or six weeks' process. So if we're thinking it'd get approved somewhere second, third week of July, then that's when it would go into effect.
Well, I'm going to tell you something, that's unacceptable. And shame for us, and shame for you. You can find a way to take care of that. And when you resign, you resign. And you got the message, and like I said, this is very unacceptable. I told you I wasn't going to say anything, but when I heard that, flags went up. It's not a good thing, what's happening now with this agreement. Unacceptable. Slap it into our faces, you sure did with this, and shame.
Christopher Boski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. I'm glad that you said about the inter-local agreement, can't the county bring someone over that can do that for us? I mean, it seems to me the county would be able to do that. And I think it's also important, I mean, I've had a few phone calls from residents myself asking me, what do they do about their permits currently? So you might want to reiterate to them, do they still come down and get them signed? I mean, they give them to you, and then you go give them to Joey, and they get brought back or delivered courier or whatever. Just reassure the public that they can still get permits done, because that, people don't know that. know that. And, yeah, so there's, I mean, I got to say, I'm a bit puzzled too about the way this is going, but definitely reassure people, please let them know how that's going to go, and if you have contacted the county, if that's even an option, or, you know, a neighboring city. Because, and also, some time ago, it was mentioned that there would be cross-training. So, this gentleman that you mentioned that will have that ability, will we not have others soon after that have that ability in case that man, God forbid, you know, something happens to him? So, we have multiple people that can handle this task, that we're not into a position where all permits get tied up. So, if you could explain that to the public, that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, again, just to reiterate on that, really, his license and authority gives the permission for Anthony, who I murder his last name, Mastrick, a long last, Italian last name, the authority to have him review and do the signing off. And, again, it's not a simple process to go all the way, but we all work on that, and we always try to do cross-training, but the ability to get a CBO and a CFM for the certified building is not an easy process and very long in labor and training intensive, so it is probably one of the hardest ones to get, but we always like to work on backups.
Marty Peters, 1702 Heritage Oaks Court. Just a couple of questions. In this situation, the employee was basically asked to resign, I believe. If the employee was fired, we would have to show some sort of cause, wouldn't we just normally, and wouldn't that employee, if we just said, "Good riddance, we don't want you anymore," that there might be some legal challenges that could end up costing the city some money? And I throw that out as a possibility, and if that is so, that it could cost the city some money paying the lawyers, we might be better off with this severance package as is, because it sort of resolves the situation for everybody and may save the city a lot of money, because you know what them lawyers are like.
No other public comments? Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. That concludes the agenda for the night.
Chief?
No comments, Mayor.
Attorney?
No comments, Mayor.
Oh, you did a good job with this process. Oh, city manager?
I just want to mention, we did have, speaking of development agreements, we had a very good meeting. And, again, it wasn't the city meeting, it was the developers' meeting with the residents. I was there to take notes with a lot of the concerns. I'm in the process of meeting with staff and going over those concerns. We'll have more meetings and talks on, I'm talking about Bay Shore Heights, with them, and probably in my plans, as I've told several of the residents and stuff, I'll probably have one more public meeting that'll be the city-run to talk to, to answer some of the questions that came from when they were talking to the developer, and, you know, give some of their perspectives from our stormwater experts and those as opposed to theirs. So, the process is still going forward. Again, it was well-attended, a meeting of residents' inputs, and we hope to work more of them, and hopefully get as many of the issues as possible worked out before that development agreement comes back to you for a final decision. And the process is going well, so we'll continue that and try to get as much public input and take care of the issues as much as possible before it comes to you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
No comments.
Mr. Banther?
No, no comments, sir.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I have something that I just wanted to bring up. I think one of our jobs as commissioners is to evaluate job performance for the city manager, the city attorney, as well as the city clerk, and I think we should be doing that on an annual basis. And I could be mistaken, but I don't think that we've really been doing that with consistency. So, I wanted to make two suggestions. Number one, that we each on this board make sure that we are up to date on evaluations. I think Ms. Hickey can provide us with the templates and forms that have been used in the past. And then, in addition to that, I think at some point in the near future, maybe in a work session or in a commission meeting, we should work with staff to develop some kind of a procedure to make sure that we have a system in place so that we can, you know, have a date certain that evaluations will be done by such-and-such date, or some kind of a system in place to make sure that these are being done on an annual basis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Thank you. I would just like to tell you all that at our next meeting, I will be a father, which I'm really excited about. And my wife, my son is breached, so we have a scheduled C-section for Thursday morning at 7:30. So, definitely keep you informed with pictures and information, God willing, everything will go smoothly. And after 20, almost 29 years, the Tarpani family have a new ER, so, exciting.
Well, I just say congratulations. We definitely wish you and your wife the best. One of the things is, and I haven't had a chance to talk with you about, but if we can kind of look at what has been proposed for as green light, and then maybe bring that forward to see where we're at as far as that.
Yeah, but let me explain to you the timetable that I put together tentatively. We do these things out and do it. Obviously, we've had a request from the opposition group to speak like they did in their scheduled for the first meeting in July. Obviously, that was the next meeting when we had a full commission, and that's important for the full commission to hear. And then, I know we've got a request, we'll have a request for an endorsement of green light, so unless there's any objection or anything else, I'd probably schedule that for the set. We've had a chance to hear green light, we'll have a chance to hear the opposition, and I can't remember their name, but I've had several conversations, and they wanted some equal time to talk to you before that. So, as soon as the second meeting in July, we will have heard both sides and stuff, and then if the commission wants to take a position, like some other cities have done for or against, then we could do that at the second meeting in July or any other date after that, that if that's the wishes of the city to go forward and take a position on that. So, again, that's a tentative schedule, depending on what your wishes are as a commission.
I have no fault, as long as we just don't let it just linger there, you know, and do say one way or the other, yeah.
So, again, on my tentative agenda, the opposition group is tentatively for the first meeting in July, and then his second one was tentatively to bring back, if you want to do a proclamation or, you know, endorsement or not on the green light.
I'm not sure if, you know, if you can find out, what's our schedule for is completion of the tennis court there at Dorset. You know, every time I look around, somebody's asking me, they took the concrete out, but, you know, so that means that it started, but we can find out where, and then we can let people know exactly what our process is.
I'll try to get that to you tomorrow.
Okay. And with that, we'll adjourn this meeting at, it looks like about 12 days.